Good morning. It is March already, March 2nd, 2021. We will call to orders the Story County Board of Supervisors. With that, if you are able, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Due to the ongoing pandemic, we are continuing to limit the number of people in our public meeting room as allowed per Section 21.8.1 and also providing public access via Zoom. With that, is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved, second.
Then moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Faisal, aye. Haddon, aye. Next, it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anyone who has anything to say for public comment? If so, please raise your hand via Zoom or press star nine. I don't want to say start six. I think it's on my phone. See anything, ma'am? Seeing none, we will close public comment at this time. Next, we will go on and we have a proclamation acknowledging March 8th as International Women's Day for 2021. And I'm going to ask my colleagues if they would join me in reading parts of the proclamation. And I believe Supervisor Merkin, we have you to start. Whereas, International Women's Day has occurred for well over a century with the first gathering held in 1911. And whereas today, International Women's Day launched to all groups collectively everywhere. International Women's Day is not a country group organization specific. And whereas International Women's Day is a global day celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women, today also marks the call to action for accelerating gender parity. Significant activities witnessed worldwide as groups come together to celebrate women's achievements around the women's equality. And whereas marked annually on March 8th, International Women's Day is one of the most important days of the year to celebrate women's achievements, raise awareness about women's equality, lobby for accelerated gender parity, fundraise for female-focused charities. And whereas the campaign theme for International Women's Day 2021 is Choose to Challenge. A challenging world is an alert world, and from challenge comes change. And now therefore be resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2021, as International Women's Day 2021, and commit to choose to change. Choose to challenge, I'm sorry, choose to challenge, thanks for that correction. Congratulations to all those who brought this before us and in our support for International Women's Day for 2021. I'm looking at option of proclamation, second. Been moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Faisal, aye. Haddon, aye. Next, we'll move on. We have no agency reports at this time. Consideration of minutes, is there a motion to approve the February 23rd, 2021 minutes?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin, Faisal, aye. Merkin, aye. Haddon, aye. Next, we have consideration of personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal, Merkin, aye. Faisal, aye. Haddon, aye. Next is consideration of claims. Is there a motion to approve the March 4th, 2021 claim?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin, Faisal, aye. Merkin, aye. Haddon, aye. Consent agenda. Don't believe there's anything being removed from the consent or put in the consent agenda. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Merkin and seconded by Faisal, Merkin, aye. Faisal, aye. Haddon, aye. Next, public hearing. We have no public hearing items. Next, we have additional items. The first additional item is the memorandum of understanding with the City of Ames. This is a memorandum that was brought in discussion with the City of Ames taking over the payroll for the City of Suffolk office. They need a transition time for this to begin by January 1 of 2022. And so I know the city is having it on this on their agenda either tonight or next week. They're going to be early March, they're going to be putting the same thing on the agenda. And I did have our county attorney review this as well, and the city attorney looked it over. Any questions?
I have no question, but the auditor's office is the most directly affected, so I'll ask Auditor Martin if she has any concerns about the memorandum.
Nope, we're all in favor of it.
Okay, great.
All right, with that, is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Ames and the Story County Iowa regarding the Ames City of Suffolk?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin, Faisal, aye. Merkin, aye. Haddon, aye. Okay, next is the discussion and consideration of removing the hiring freeze. Alyssa, with you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
It was asked at one of our meetings last week if the Board would consider removing the hiring freeze exemption, or hiring freeze that we have currently had in place since last April due to COVID. So what I used as the attachment is just our current policy that kind of lays out, you know, everything. And then I just wanted the Board to have a discussion. Do you want to continue with the hiring freeze? Is this something you're willing to remove at this point? If things change, it could be brought back and implemented at a later time too, if necessary. So I just wanted to have some open dialogue with the Board on where your thoughts are.
I think I was the person that initially suggested, I mean, we're supposed to have a hiring freeze when moving into the pandemic, and I was concerned because we really had no idea what was going to happen to our revenues. And I think it's a good time to look at this, since we've just gone through next year's budget and looked at revenues pretty closely. And I think it still is, I think it would be reasonable to inactivate it.
Inactivate it, okay.
I would agree. Yeah, I would agree. Do departments still have to come forward with a request as it is? So.
For a new position.
Yes, for a new position. Now they would be able to just go ahead and work with HR to get those. If there's no hiring freeze, they would, it'd just be normal. They advertise. The actual formal hiring would come through the Board as it always has on consent.
Yeah, I have no problem lifting it at this particular time. I agree. I think we really were trying to be tight and really be mindful early on during the pandemic and seeing where we're at right now. I think everybody really rose to the kind of the occasion and stuff to make sure that we were, just because we didn't know.
Yep.
How everything was going to be.
I agree. And I think if we just keep an eye on everything, I know the auditor's office, they keep a pretty close eye on revenues and would let the Board know if anything changes. And then we could come back to the Board and ask for your consideration again, if needed.
Sure. So probably the motion should just be to remove it rather than deactivate it.
I would remove, yeah, remove it with effective immediately or whatever the Board.
We do have three to deal with today, and I think since they're on the agenda, we should deal with them. So what if we, I would make a move to remove the hiring freeze effectively March 3rd, 2021.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to remove the hiring freeze to March 3rd, 2021.
March 3rd.
Okay. Merkin, aye. Faisal, aye. Haddon, aye.
Thank you. And I'll send something out just to departments after the meeting saying effective tomorrow, there is no hiring freeze in place.
Great, okay, great. Thank you. All right, next we have discussion and consideration of the hiring freeze exemption request from the Treasurer's Office for the Universal Clerk. That would be Ted Rassenson. Ted, online.
I have a feeling the next three motions will be pretty straightforward. In case I show up, it's tomorrow anyway. I just didn't feel like we could.
Ted, if you're on the cell phone, can you raise your hand or unmute yourself?
You can handle it, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we'll just go through it if he hops on and wants to add anything. So they did have a resignation within their office. And within, excuse me, the last couple of weeks, and the Treasurer would like to fill that Universal Clerk position. They're coming into, the end of March is busy. I mean, I know they can't have anybody hired and fully onboard by the end of March, but they would like to get that process started so they can get that individual trained and move forward with that.
All right, any discussion? Is there a motion to approve the hiring freeze exemption request for the Treasurer's Office for the Universal Clerk?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin, Faisal, aye. Merkin, aye. Haddon, aye. Okay, next we have discussion and consideration of a hiring freeze exemption request for the Attorney's Office Legal Executive Officer position.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
This is to fill a recent resignation from the position of Office Manager, basically. So this is a position that I really can't do without. They supervise support staff, help me manage the attorney staff, and they work on all the administrative functions in the office, budget, activities, training, all sorts of activities. So I really need this position filled.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve the hiring freeze exemption request for the Attorney's Office Legal Executive Officer position?
So moved, second.
Then moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Faisal, aye. Haddon, aye.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for, excuse me, for Facilities Management Maintenance Technician Position.
Good morning, Board. This is Joby. Can you hear me?
Yeah, good morning, Joby. Good morning.
This is one of our maintenance techs positions. It's being vacated by a staff member who is retiring. So it's kind of a, it's a good thing that we're, you know, he's getting to retire, you know, we're going to miss him, but we need to fill this position because our maintenance techs are very crucial to our operations on many different levels.
All right, is there any questions for Joby? All right, is there a motion to approve the hiring freeze exemption request for Facilities Management Maintenance Technician Position?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin, Faisal, aye. Merkin, aye. Haddon, aye.
Thank you.
Yep. Now it looks like we're on to discussion and consideration of revised temporary employment practices and policies in response to the coronavirus.
Okay, so last week, the Board did take action to extend the 80 hours of COVID leave. So I did ask to take this back, kind of revise it, come back with a clean copy for the Board to consider this week. Excuse me, just a couple of things to note. On page two, the symptoms, we did update that with all the symptoms, the current symptoms of COVID, just so that it did have the correct information in our policy. Page four reflects the COVID, 80 hours of COVID leave. So I removed all of the FF-CRA information, the 2/3 pay for emergency FMOA, and just laid out, you know, we have the same reasons for the COVID leave they can use, that they have been able to use in the past. So those still all qualify. And then if somebody's out of their 80 hours for themselves, they can still use the sick leave to quarantine if it's the employee. So that's noted there. On page five, we just updated the international travel recommendations by the CDC. Those could change any day, so we just kind of made it broad so that we just refer to those. And then we did add just to follow all state and local recommendations or requirements after travel, just in case something gets put into place in the next month or so. That is it. And this is revision number seven on this policy from the last year. So I did note that. We originally adopted it March 20th of 2020. So it's been almost a year. A lot has changed in the year, so.
All right, any questions for Alyssa? No. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for your work. So is there a motion to approve the revised temporary employment practices and policies in response to the COVID-19 pandemic?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal, Merkin, aye. Faisal, aye. Haddon, aye.
Thank you for revising. It's good to see a final comment.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of Resolution 21-70, supporting the Story County's RISE grant application. Good morning, Darren.
Morning. What we have here is a resolution which is a requirement of the RISE grant application process. So this will be a part of the application. Our goal is right now to meet the April DOT Commission meeting for our application, and the application is due one month before the meeting. So we're putting everything together, hopefully to get that submitted this week. This would be the last step as far as the Board's concerned, I will, being the application. When we get it completed back to the Board, or the Board share at least by the end of the week, hopefully, and have them sign off on it. But this resolution will give you the authority to do that. A couple things to point out on the resolution. It mentions 48 jobs will be created. That is down a bit from what we talked about a week or two ago. It was originally 56, and this now 48 is what Verbiage is committing to. You're also committing, the Story County portion is committing the non-RISE funding an amount that exceeds 20%. That's just a requirement of the application. So you're committing to funds by this, but you still have an out if we decide not to do the project, as long as we don't let the project. The letting is what kind of dictates if we're going to do it or not. We can decide not to do it and just not let the project at a future date if we want to back out of this. And then lastly, on the last sentence says, Story County will maintain this mile roadway. We're required to put who maintains the roadway in the application. It will be somewhat shared with Nevada, but tried for over 20 years to come up with the 2018 maintenance agreement with City of Nevada, and we've been unsuccessful. We're still going to work on that, but at this point, we'll just put Story County's maintenance on the mile just for the application purposes. I think that's about it. Any other questions?
Board, any questions?
Can you remind me what the current numbers are we're looking at for Story County and the City of Nevada committing?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? My mic just went off.
Okay, it says, what are Story County and the City of Nevada? What amounts are we currently looking at being committed by the two partners there?
We do have John Hall that is in our meeting room as well.
Sure. Currently, I'm showing Story County is 618,000 and City of Nevada at 171,000. And that's assuming we get the full RISE request of 560,000.
And then if there's something that comes up beyond our control before letting this that makes it not wise for us to continue the project, not economically feasible, we can deny, decline the grant, correct? That's what you said?
Correct. Our schedule is to let this about a year from now, so we have about a year to decide if we're actually going to let it or not. So yeah, we have time to back out before the letting.
Thank you. John, did you want to add something?
Yeah, if I might. Good morning, Board. I did have Jennifer with IDOT run the 48 job count number, and she estimated that the grant would be awarded between, somewhere between 480,000 and 576,000. So that's kind of the range that we're looking at on the RISE grant itself. And then the City of Nevada did at their most recent City Council meeting, passed a similar resolution to this, as well as committing to their portion, the 0.22% of the project costs, the minimum 20%.
Can I have you state the range again, please?
Yes, 480,000 to 576,000.
So you said Nevada committed to 22%?
22% of the project, correct.
22 or 2.2?
22, sorry, 0.22. That's how much of the mile they control is 0.22, 22%.
What was the reason for the decrease in estimated number of jobs?
So there was no decrease in the overall estimated number of jobs. At the end of the day, they're creating the exact same number of jobs they anticipated. When we started this project, they had not hired all of their jobs for their Phase 1, and we thought we'd be able to take advantage of those since we hadn't had a rise for that Phase 1. But the DOT said we couldn't use those jobs too. So we were trying to count some of those that hadn't yet been created but were on their way, and the DOT would not allow that to move through, so.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 21-70, supporting the Story County's RISE grant application for Verbiage-Nevada LLC project improvement?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin, Faisal, aye. Merkin, aye. Haddon, aye.
Thank you, Board. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Darren and John. We have discussion and consideration of Resolution 21-63, the Huntsucker Development Group LLC voluntary annexation petition. Amelia, good morning.
Good morning, Board. This is an annexation request for one piece of property, and I will share my screen so we can look at the map, just north of Ames. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So the crosshatched area is 4514 Hyde Avenue, and that is the one property that is proposed to be voluntarily annexed. It's under the ownership of Huntsucker, and they also own land to the west in this area. I'm hoping you can see my mouse moving over the map too. But it's labeled as inside Ames, just to the west, and they'll be doing a development in that area in the near future and need the Hyde, the 4514 Hyde site for additional stormwater management room. And there may be an additional house built on the property in the future, but at this point, it's really just planned for detention practices to support the development to the west. I'm happy to take any questions. We have written the resolution to support the annexation, and I believe the applicant is on the phone as well, if there are any questions for Huntsucker.
Board, questions at this time?
Although it's not really related to this, we're talking about the development. I noted that the city has not made a decision on 190th and Hyde Avenue yet. Do you have any more information on that, Amelia?
I don't. I think, I listened to the audio of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Ames that considered this annexation request, and they asked staff about, you know, the plans for traffic control in the area. You know, they've heard similar concerns that we have about traffic on Hyde. And city staff at that meeting mentioned that it would be under the MPO's consideration, any traffic control on 190th and Hyde Avenue, but that the city, inside the city, had planned a traffic light at Wilmington and Hyde Avenue inside the city to the south.
And you said, Amelia, just so I'm sure that this is more to a retention pond, if that you're...
Yeah, yep. So this area is designated as a conservation design subdivision area because of its proximity to Ada Hayden. And so I believe, you know, Ames has its own stormwater management requirements, but I believe there are additional, you know, stormwater management requirements and open space requirements on the subdivision. And I think needing additional space may be related to those. The plan is just to have a detention pond on this property to support the development to the west, yes.
Is there going to be a culvert undermined?
I would defer to the applicant on that. They have not submitted the plans for the development to the west yet, and those plans would include the culverts and the stormwater designs. So those would be reviewed by the City of Ames as engineer at that point.
Thank you. Any other question? All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 21? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't touch that. I'm sorry, yes. Yes, yes, looks like Angela Powers would like to speak. My apologies.
Hi, hello. I think my question was answered already. So it was just how the project would impact the park.
And I'm happy just to provide some more information on that. Sorry, I moved my screen. So again, you know, this annexation would essentially allow for the detention pond to be developed under the City of Ames standards concurrently with that subdivision to the west, which I think is important so that Ames can review the designs for the detention pond as it relates to the development to the west, if that helps.
I believe Jim Patton had a question.
Yeah, my question is, as I look at the map, it appears this property is not within the city boundaries. So how much control does the city have, or does anyone have, over the shape and size of this detention, retention pond? And my concern particularly is accented because of the topography of this property, which really is not going to facilitate a very large area for retention pond unless there was a significant amount of earth moving taking place, all of that threatening the lake.
A good question. Again, you're right, this property is not located within the city boundaries. And so that's why it's being proposed to be annexed so that this pond may be developed under the city's standards, including those for erosion control the city's standards, including those for erosion control during construction, which would cover, you know, the perimeter controls or other controls for grading work to make sure that there wasn't erosion or sedimentation that would impact properties downs, downslope.
Can I add something to that, Jim? The, the reality is that the property to the west of Hyde has already been annexed by the city. So if this is going to be their solution in terms of protecting Ada Hayden and, and making sure that the, you know, to protect that from stormwater, I think it makes sense for the whole thing to be under City of Ames regulations. You know, the city, this doesn't bind the city to approve what the developer suggests there. I think that might be an important thing to look at. Is this just allows the city to exercise its authority in the design? Does that make sense?
Supervisor, Merkin, I think that's, that was, yes, that makes sense to me. That's correct. You know, we don't want any irregularities created if a detention pond were to be created to serve the development to the west but wasn't annexed into the city. You know, I don't want any irregularities in whose regulations would apply, or I think this would just create not only more uniform boundaries for the city, but clearer jurisdictional requirements in terms of whose regulations apply and allowing the city to review those plans.
And Amelia, I'm assuming there's protections for like fertilizer runoff also, right?
You know, I think that would be part of the development to the west, the plans for the development to the west, if those were included in the restrictive covenants, and the City of Ames might already have those restrictions as part of its conservation design guidelines. I'm not too familiar with their conservation design guidelines, but that might be already part of their regulations.
Are there any other questions, or anyone have land that you're seeing? Okay. Since we're not seeing anyone else who has any additional questions at this particular time, I'll ask if there is a motion to approve Resolution 21-63, the Huntsucker Development Group LLC voluntary annexation petition.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Hedin's aye. Motion approved. Next up, thank you, Amelia. Next up, we have departmental reports from Facilities Management.
Good morning, Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, this is my quarterly report. Most of the top portion of what you received is pretty standard, go through of kind of what we do for work orders on a daily basis and kind of the overall tally. New number that showed up this quarter is, got some snow days, 31 of them to be exact. So it was pretty busy with snow. We've got a few big ones, but nothing we're not used to doing. Then we had some big things happen, starting in January, about mid-January, we had a contractor hit. Main supply and return lines that feed all our geothermal heating and cooling equipment, the repairs been done. Last week, we did the major flush of the building and got as much debris out of it as we could. I'm going to call it, it was very successful. We've got all equipment back online. We got that going. Evening on last Thursday, we're still tying up some loose ends. Anytime you open up a piping system of that size, you introduce air into it, so it takes time to get all that air purged out. We do have a couple of low-lying areas in the piping system that are in the building, primarily in the sheriff's office area that are, you know, they only serve a handful of pieces of equipment, they're small size pipes. We are still getting a very small amount of fine sand, but we have installed additional filters throughout the facility to catch that and then get it out of the system. So I'm confident within probably the next three weeks, the whole system will be free of any debris. The new deionized water and glycol helps the heat transfer with the system and keep it from freezing is in. So we do have a few equipment repairs that we will perform probably in the next month, month and a half, but we, those are due to the main circulating pumps. We've discussed this at other meetings. We're just making sure that the system is performing as it should before we schedule another repair on it. The pumps aren't damaged to the point where they aren't able to perform their duties, but they were damaged, so we can operate with them as they are now. And then as we're comfortable with the rest of the system being up to snuff, so to speak, then we will begin the rebuild of those pumps. Then during this, what field project that it's had, all, all of our maintenance tech staff have been at that building primarily every day since the 13th of January. Starting today, we started to pull some of them off and get them back onto doing our normal day-to-day stuff and trying to get caught up. But we also had a sprinkler head that decided to leak at the Human Services Center that flooded a large area of that building. All that water has been cleaned up. We got things dried out to an acceptable level. There are some sheet rock in multiple areas that is needing to be replaced, and that started this morning. And then working with the ICAP and an insurance adjuster, getting costs put together to see what, what the total overall cost to remedy all the water damage will be, and then I will be back in front of the board, discuss what we move forward with, because we are, all the carpet on the second floor in like the multipurpose room area, conference room east, where the DCAT offices and Fine's recovery was a complete loss. We did however, so we don't have any biological issues with that carpet, we did disinfect and sanitize all the carpets that got wet, so that we don't create any other problems down the road, but eventually that carpet on second floor will need to be replaced. And we are working on getting estimates for that, getting that information to ICAP so that they can come up with a full report. Included in that is all staff hours that have been involved in dealing with the flooding. So it's on its way. We sustain, most of the damage was ceiling tile and the flooring, and then the sheet rock damage was minimal when you compare it to the flooring and ceiling tile. Little update is, the stair tower treads at the administration building, they've been in place for about a year and a half, pushing on two years, but determined that there was a manufacturer's defect in the treads, and that is why they were not sticking to the stairs themselves. Well, manufacturer is the one that took responsibility for it and has paid to have all of them replaced again, and they finished that up yesterday afternoon. So all three stair towers have now had all the stair treads removed, the old adhesive removed, proper adhesive used, and the new stair treads that should not have the same defect as before. Basically, what it come down to is they use a release agent when they make those stair treads so that they peel away from the mold, the injection mold. Well, a big batch of that, I guess they used too much of the release agent, so there wasn't an adhesive on the planet that would stick to it. So that has been remedied at the factory, and these should stick to the stairs. Outside of those major items, if there's any questions?
Are there any questions?
I just wanted to say, Jovi, I really appreciate your technical, technical expertise you bring to this job. It seems like it's really been challenged on some of these recent incidents. And I also wanted to say just one thing, and this is just for the record, it's a real picky. Your report says December 2, 2020 to March 24, 2021. As soon as supposed to be through February 24?
Yeah, that would be correct. I didn't even catch that. Good catch, yes, it should be February 24.
Just in case somebody goes back to their report later, maybe it'd be good to get that one corrected and resubmitted.
Yes, thank you, Linda. Yeah, I didn't even notice that.
I'm surprised I did.
It's been a little busy, so.
I felt that too, didn't know if it was meant to be February 24th or if it had an extra a four in it, it was supposed to be March, to March 2nd, so was next, or in it. Jovi, I just have one question for you, and that's in regards to the sprinkler system over at the HCS building. So did we ever figure out, was it a flow issue? Is that why the alarm didn't go?
Yes, basically what it amounts to is when those sprinkler systems are designed, you know, they're, they're designed with the understanding and intention that if a sprinkler head goes off, it is set off because of a fire reason. And this was a, a slow leak, so the flow rate wasn't at the level that the sprinkler system is designed. Ways to, is this something that we can prevent in the future? And then it, and it come down to, you know, and then a lot of it was, is the why did this one do what it did? And every person I could talk to, and I talked with people who had over 30 years in the industry, and they're like, I've never seen this happen before. So I don't know if we just got this weird black cloud over us right now that it fit into that category, but we are looking at ways to, whether it's a more sensitive flow switch that we can use, or some sort of water sensing system to where if, because this one happened sometime after facility staff left on a Friday at midnight until it was discovered the next Monday morning. So we're determining that sometime on Saturday is when the leak started, but since there's the, it was at such a small rate of flow, we weren't alerted in any way until somebody physically seen the wet floor. So I'm looking at ways to avoid that in the future, and then still working with three different sprinkler contractors on why this one did it, if it was just bad luck, and then we are looking at doing a, a testing of the remainder, pulling percentage of the sprinkler heads that are still in service and having them tested, because Underwriters Laboratory will do that at a cost, and then make the decision if we need to think about replacing all the sprinkler heads in the building, because there was nothing I could find pointed at any type of known defect with this particular model and brand of sprinkler head. And it's not like it's, it's a very popular one and is used in many facilities throughout the entire nation, so it's, I'm not finding any information to point towards any kind of defect that anybody's, is aware of.
Okay, is it possible to put a, an alarm system on the water meter itself?
See, Latifah, the sprinkler systems, when they're supplied by the city water supply, but they are an un-metered system, so we would have to, but it's a good point to bring up, because we've discussed, do we add one that when it shows that it is moving water into the system, whether it's just something simply that it sends a notice out, but their current design, they are an un-metered water supply, since it's a fire suppression system that it only goes off, supposed to only go activate in a fire situation.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your report, Jovi.
Yes.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, have a good rest of the day.
Thanks, you too.
You. We have no other reports, upcoming agenda items. Any other specific times? Okay, next is public forum number two, comments from the public on, publics and the public on items not on this agenda. Board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meeting slot, but may do so in the future. I, this time I will open up for public comment. Either unmute yourself using star nine, or raise your hand on, raise your hand and we'll call on you. Not seeing anyone moving for public comment, at this time we'll close public, the public forum number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from supervisors.
I just looked at my calendar, and we've got a lot of the ISAC conference virtually coming up this week, several, several Zoom sessions, so it's going to be a Zoom week. That's all I have. Oh, we're also still working on the broadband study and our Story County Reofficer meeting tomorrow, and talking about how we're going to get information out about the survey that's going to be part of the broadband study. We've got a lot of ideas, we're just trying to hone in on a specific plan for that.
Yeah, so the, the train, the new officer training, Thursday morning, I'm going to be on KHOI to talk about the housing study, and then I've got an alternatives pre, post- arrest program team meeting. We've got a department recognition on Thursday also. And then Monday, I've got opioid task force, Story County College Access Network strategic planning meeting. There's, I've got an E91, E9111 public hearing on my calendar.
That's right, thank you.
And then I have boost in the evening, and then it looks like Tuesday morning, candidates and votes for our board meeting.
Yeah.
So I have, like you, the ISAC meetings this week and into next week, and I think there's some later in the month as well, so it's kind of spread throughout the month since we are meeting virtually versus in person. We have a couple of recognitions coming up as well, as I have a workforce development meeting on Friday, and then another one on Monday. Tuesday, then I also have, and I could announce this on Tuesday as well, I have that community health collaborative meeting in the afternoon after our board meeting. So that's the information that I have at this particular time. Oh, and I think, oh, and next week we have the Story Assessors Board meeting as well. So that is next week. With that, our next topic is to propose Section 21.5. Aye, we're going to go into closed session. So at this time, we will move into closed session. Sorry, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Hedin's aye.
Can you do a vote?
Yes. Okay, we'll reconvene, please, I'm late for losing. Okay, we're reconvening back in open session. Is there consideration of the Director of Internal Operations and Human Resources Annual Performance Review?
I think we just need a motion through the chair to complete the performance review.
Okay.
That's discussed in closed session. Is anybody going to, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Okay, then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Haddon, aye. Is there anything else to come before the board?
I don't know if this is necessary, but I have in here to make a motion about privately salivating. I don't know if that's just a whole other from last time.
I don't know how you handled that with the merit last time. Did you make a motion here, or was it on the next agenda?
She'll let you set this up, that's why I'm bringing it up, because then it happened in, I think, the last time we did this.
The action part would be on the next two six agenda, so if you want to make, have the chair make a recommendation.
Yeah, you can do that, that's mine.
We'll have to do that. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? I just want to make sure that's where we're at.
Yep.
Okay.
It's a motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon? Aye. We are adjourned.